Submit it.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, motion made second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye, aye.
We have four hearings tonight. One at 7:15, case number 15.04, 95 Wethersfield Street. At 7:30, case number 15.03, Artistic Landscapes, 111 Newburyport Turnpike. At 8:00 PM, we have case number 15.05, at 8:87, Hable Street. And at 8:30, case number 810.06, Marion Way. And I would, for those that are going to make presentations tonight, we have two of our members absent tonight because of illness, and one of our alternates is absent tonight because of illness. So I'm gonna appoint Bob Cool to be the fourth member tonight to serve on these cases. And we're a five-member board, and any decision that we make has to be unanimous. And we have the right to not be heard tonight because we don't have a full board. You understand that, Arthur?
Yes, I do.
You understand that? Is Debbie coming?
No, she isn't.
She's not. I'm gonna move along. You're here representing?
Marion Way.
You're here, Marion Way, okay. And you?
Just the butters to the Wethersfield, Debbie Smith. Has been Phil Crooks just bought the property on this art terrace. He's trying to make the work.
Okay. Do you know if anybody else is coming for this hearing?
I don't know.
All right. There's no objection, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Nothing wrong.
Okay. Public hearing, case number 15.04, from Deborah Smith for a special permit in 95 Wethersfield Street. Now open. The public hearing will be proceeded in orderly fashion. I ask the co-operation following procedure. Everyone present will be given the opportunity to be heard after the application is presented and the board members have asked questions. The secretary will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the board, begin by stating your name and address. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Does any member of the board have illegal民事 cases? So let me read the application first.
We have illegal cases.
Does anybody have any conflict with this new case?
No.
No?
Okay. Public notice of this application is posted at Town Hall, sent to a certified listed bodies in interest, and was published in Town Common on October 1st, 2014, and October 8th, 2014. And read as follows. Case number 15.04. A public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, Annex 39, Central Street, on Thursday, October 16th, at 7:15 PM. To act on an application received September 2nd, 2014, from Deborah A. Smith, 95 Wethersfield Street, Rowley Masse. Applicant is requesting a modification of special permit. The board appeals for the denunciation of a boundary line from the requirements of 6313. The Rowley Detective Zone by law. Property is located at 95 Wethersfield Street, Rowley Masse. The property is in the Central District and is shown in the Cessna 17 lot 54. At the public hearing, members may speak and ask questions and present evidence that support either the approval or denial of this application. The purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve with conditions or deny. Before the public before hearing from the public, the applicant will be allowed to present their case, and then board members will be allowed to ask questions upon them. And then you have look at the application. Lisa, I don't have an application.
Yeah, keep going, keep taking all the information. You want to leave, you can leave.
There you go.
If you wanna leave, you can leave.
Applicant, Deborah A. Smith, 95 Wethersfield Street. She is the owner of the property. And she's asking for modification of a special permit. The special permit was issued by this Board of Appeals on October 9th, 2003. The boundary line dispute involving many changes with Anita Schwarzenheimer and a body neighbor has been settled. And the premises is in the Central District, and it's not a mobile line district. And it is filed in registry of deeds, book number 15777, page 431, 433, and 15972, page 123, and book number 15972, page 127, and book number 17740-457. Create the description, proposed work and use, creation of a plan that denounces the boundary line between the body neighbors. The reason for the request is as follows. Neither party could agree on the location of the boundary line. Okay. We have memorandum from the Board of Selectmen, which states review, the Board Sec. reviewed the following applications during their October meeting. Application from Deborah A. Smith, who's EBA from the application of a special permit for the denunciation of the boundary line. Board Sec. did not have any recommendations on this application. We have an O-Lon from the Board of Health. The application of 95 Wethersfield Street has been reviewed. The Health Department has a subject system location file and plan on file. The application does not indicate that the system will be impacted by the request. And we have an O-Lon from the Conservation Commission. dated October 9th, modification of special permit, case number 15.04, 95 Wethersfield Street. Conservation Department has no objections or concerns regarding proposed boundary line adjustment. And I've read the application. And we're dealing with section 63.6, 6.3, 1.3. Board of Appeals may grant a permit for less than the required lot area for an existing building converted to more than one growing unit or for multi-family building, provided that and it has several other things here. Board of Health has approved the resubstitution of the system. And they stated that it's all right. No more than 25% of the lot is being covered by structures. There's at least one hour street parking space that is pending on the efficiency apartment. There's a provision of the screening, the fencing, landscaping, and the building is served by local municipal water. And then the floor area structure will be converted shall contain at least 1,100 square feet. And the floor area will be less than 350 square feet. 100 square feet for each bedroom over one. Okay, you have a copy of the map. Okay, I do have a certified product list. I won't go through that. Okay, going to turn it up. Arthur?
Yes.
Go on.
My name, excuse me, my name is Arthur Oz. I have a law office at 20 Market Street in Epsom. I represent Deborah Smith and Agent Sheeran, 95 Wethersfield Street. She's seeking here a modification of the special permit. And this is the reason. Originally, the lot had two houses on it several years ago. One of them was torn down, and Deborah fixed up the original so and made an apartment of it so that it could her two parents moved, her parents moved in. And she filed this and got a very, a special permit, as you pointed out, on October 9th, 2007. Since that time, over the course of the last 10 or 11 several years, one boundary, the boundary next to the Sheemaya, the next, the next, one of the boundaries is about 225 feet long. And it weaves in and out, and it's like the tide. It comes in and it goes out, and nobody couldn't, nobody could determine for certain where it was. Particularly these two owners, who had many conversations. In the beginning, the conversations were a problem, and then it turned into a controversy. And a year or so ago, the neighbor brought an action in Superior Court, and there is a case now in the land court in Boston. We had a couple of appearances there, and the judge urged all parties to see if they could finally remedy the situation and agree on a property line. Now, the property line went like that, in and out, up and down. And both of these owners had different ideas of where the property line was, should be. But during the course of several months, actually, we have come to an agreement where the property line is. And all sides agree. The judge goes along with it. And, but what it does, it cuts across into two straight lines. And both sides have made concessions. Both sides have lost a little bit of land, and both sides have gained a little bit of land. So that we now have a boundary line that's and we have, together, we've hired engineers, and they have placed it on a, on a, on a plan, in which a copy are included in my is this it? Yes. However, the reason that we're here is because if Debbie wants to mortgage or sell this property, it has, it will have changed because there is going to be some conveyances back and forth between the two neighbors. And I'm afraid that if we don't correct this now, in the future, it will be a major problem. So what we're seeking for is, and the changes are de minimis. We're talking, we're talking maybe a foot here, and inches there, and a foot there. And, but we're talking the, so that we can get the, the special permit to recognize that the present square footage is sufficient to warrant the issuance of a special permit.
Okay, we're not here to approve the lot line. We're here to approve the area?
Yes. The plan says that there's, there's, this plan that says there's 30,950, 915 square feet.
Okay.
In presently, today, in that area. And we have a, we have a boundary line to which all the parties agree is a fair, a fair resolution of this problem. As a result of months of work.
Okay. Do you remember what the block area was prior to this change?
It says in the original decision that it was 32,500. So it's about, what'd you say, 920? Is that what you said the new one is?
915.
915 is what the new one is? So it's about 415 additional square feet is what has been created by this agreed-upon new boundary evidently.
Has she lost land or increased?
No, it's increased, she's increased, she's increased, you know, but we're talking about, you know, if it's 400 square feet, it's about, you know, one third percent. So de minimis is a reasonable description of it. I think all we're, I think all I have to do is accept the lot size. Now, we did today, didn't we today, get something from Concom on this? Brett said something late today. What was that on?
I believe it wasn't on this, it was on
It was, it was on another one? Okay, fine.
Yeah, it was on the other.
Okay, fine.
Okay, the subject system is, I'll put it back.
Well, if anything, since the lot's getting bigger, it might be worth review closely. There are sheds depicted on here. Have they been, that look to appear to be bisected by the agreed-upon property line? Have those sheds been moved or taken down?
Yeah, we've taken, the shed is simply gonna be moved if it hasn't already been moved.
Okay, well, we got, we got three sheds here. One of them's right on the property line.
Yeah, I think the line goes through another one.
Right.
Yeah, those sheds have, all of them are gonna be moved. Or maybe they have to. They're certainly not gonna share them.
Well, that isn't, there's no, this is a border here, the shed, can you?
Just for me.
Sure.
Is this where the property line was? Pointed to go around the sheds and whatnot.
Oh, no, no. It was a jigzag, it was a jigzag shape around bushes and, and the way it goes, there's, there are two straight lines now, and that's the way it is now. But before, it was, it was, well, it would start here and go in and out, all the way down, and screw off in there. They didn't really know.
So this is the line right here?
Yes.
And everything else goes?
Right.
Okay.
And that is the, and on the new lot, the 30,915, is that the square footage of the new lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any questions, ma'am? You agree with this?
Pardon?
You agree with this?
We've only lived there for two months, and we just heard about this dispute, dispute in the back. As I said, I'm just sitting in front of this man who's preparing lay for work.
Are you one of the five lots depicted on this?
Yes.
Which lot are you?
Let's see, we have these two lots.
All right.
Yeah, this one, this one.
Directly behind it. The Stevens property?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So your property, that's the, we're gonna leave these two properties. I don't see that it has any material effect on that.
It has actually no effect, does it? I mean, as far as I can tell, there's zero effect on on her lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Has no effect on her as well.
What's the total depth of this lot here? 60, what is that, 67? 167, I think? 44?
She's got the biggest lot. That's it.
Yes.
Okay.
Been here.
Oh, okay, I got another. Okay, Arthur, you can shut up. We got a letter here from the Town Planner. I know as by the planning board that once the boundary line goes determined, that the applicant would need to issue A and R endorsement prior to recording of the plan. The reason for the ZBA application is unclear to me. Is the ZBA acting as an objector of the boundary line dispute? Or is the ZBA granting interference in regards to non-conformity? Also, I have a question as to how the boundary line is being set. Is the line located based on a field survey or historic survey? Is the boundary being shifted in any way? Or is it being set in a location which is determined by historical evidence or feedback? The reason I ask this is because if the lot line configuration is being newly created, there's a technical issue with obtaining the A and R endorsement from the planning board. If the basis lot area or the lot footage on private, on the private way are being made more non-conforming. Since lot area and lot footage are two critical zoning dimensions and criteria when determining whether they sub-division or re-subdivision of
Well, the fact of the matter is that, as a result, he brings up a valid point, which I think we should ask Mr. Ross about, which is, where did the, how did they come to the agreement? Is there some sort of survey, surveying material? I guess that's what they're relying on here. But the fact of the matter is also, with the lot is
He's asking you a question.
Well, I haven't asked him yet.
Oh.
I'm asking you.
Oh.
The fact of the matter is, relative to Kirk's point, is that the lot is becoming less non-conforming, not more non-conforming, because the lot is actually growing. The original lot that the ZBA approved is growing by 400 feet. So technically speaking, it's becoming less non-conforming.
Right.
So I don't know if that may may negate some of the concern that he has with the A and R distinction. Because as I see it, the
They're good at starting the plan anyway.
The, yeah, and the lot's getting larger.
Right, but he's correct that until it's recognized by the planning board as an A and R and recorded, it's not a legal lot. So we're acting on a lot that is a proposed legal lot that isn't yet a legal lot because it isn't recorded as an A and R. That's his point. See, it's a new lot. And until it's recorded as a new lot, a decision of ours would be then reflected as a lot that we approved before it was recorded at the registry as an A and R. What did we approve in our previous decision?
You approved it at 32,500 square feet.
And, and the lot lines have changed. It's a bigger lot now.
It's being, we're being asked to
Right, so there's no, there's no problem with the size of the lot because it's increased.
Right.
So that's not the problem. The problem is the definition of the lot. 32?
Yes.
How, 3?
No, 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 no. It's 32.5, it's going to 32.9.
This says 39.15.
1.95.
You approved 32.5.
This is 39.15.
So the lot now is smaller.
Well, this measurement on this lot is smaller. This survey is not
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, that's current, but this says, this does say 30,000, correct. But your original, but your original decision approved a 32,000 square foot.
It could be that that number is wrong.
But this is, is it, is not a recorded decision?
Right.
And we, we're not sure we can trust this number by their own representation?
Right, and there's a way to do it. Right? In other words, if there's, if, if there's an issue about the actual square footage and whether the original decision was right or wrong, or this is right or wrong, that's still
That's the closest thing we have.
Only a boundary line plan, it's not a recorded A and R plan. So if we said, do your A and R, get it approved, get it recorded, and we'll approve it then, then you're approving a permit for a plan that's of record, and it makes moot any discrepancy between the old issue, the old permit and the new one. Okay. All right. Did they go to the planning board yet? Have you been to the planning board at all?
No, but what, part of the process is that we are, have to get the, it has to meet whatever standards there are anywhere. They have to be met when we want to record the plan, as he says. But in order to complete, complete the work, which is, is still, we have to, we have to get together, the people together, and convey certain parcels. And the conveyance is, is, is gonna take time and expense. And it would be, it would be greatly to our advantage if we could be sure we had, we could work with that. And we are going to, it has to meet all these standards because in order to record it, as we will do, of necessity, because the court will demand it before the judge approves it. of necessity, because the court will demand it before the judge approves it. And so we, we, we kind of need that now. Yeah, it's a question of which comes first.
I've gone for it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I leave, I leave in front of the cart or are you behind the cart?
You're right on top of it, right in the center. You know? I guess, you know, I'm looking for justice, but I'm also looking for mercy. But, you know, we, we, we have spent so much time on this and it's going to, if we can't get this, then what's going to happen? The judge will order a trial. And that's going to cost tons of money. I mean, not that I object, I believe it, but my client will.
Mr. Chairman? I, I don't know if this board has ever done this before, but I, I suspect it probably has. If you, if you grant a permit subject to conditions, and the conditions are as we want.
I think that, and I think we've done that before.
Yeah, and I think we can do that.
That's what we'll do. That's what we'll do. Thanks for bringing that up.
Or, I, I would just like to clarify then for the board that the lot, as it stands, is thirty thousand nine hundred and fifteen square feet. And you're asking it to go up to thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifteen square feet?
No, 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 it's, it's never going to move. If that's, that's, that's what it is now and that's what it's going to be forever.
Okay.
Okay, so regardless of the square footage recited in a prior decision, that's the square footage you want as depicted on this plan, on this application?
Forever.
Until it's changed later. But, but for this permit, it's as shown on this plan, whether it's more or less than is originally shown.
Exactly. That, that's fine. And, and we have, we have to have it right. It, it meets not only, it must meet the standards set by the registry of deeds, the, the planning boards, it's a, we've got to go before the planning board, and also, most importantly, Judge Harry Grossman in the land court.
Any further questions?
I think Bob's right. I think we just have to determine if we want to approve it with the condition that it, that before we... I mean, evidently what, what you need, evidently what they need is a, is a decision. Like, this is what I'm trying to figure out, is what, what we're going to approve here. If we're not changing the lot size at all, regardless of where the line is...
You are changing it, but whether it's up or down, if, if we say de minimis. But regardless of the prior decision, we think that this is substantially in compliance with the prior decision. So that we're approving it conditioned upon the recording of an A and R plan, precisely in accordance with the depiction on this plan.
Okay.
Okay, want to make that motion?
Yeah.
So move.
Second. I don't have any problem with it. I don't have any problem. It sounds like all the parties worked very hard to get to here and are happy to have it settled.
Well, I, I think, and I think probably the most important part of all is that it really doesn't deviate from the original decision. I mean, the fact that it's off by one percent of the, of the square footage of the, whatever they thought the original size of the lot was, they, this board granted a permit on that lot. The current lot, whether a little more or a little less, is almost exactly the same. The difference is de minimis. Therefore, we're going to recognize the party's agreement, but they got to go and record an A and R plan.
Okay.
Okay, the motion's been made. Second. Any further discussion? Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, Arthur. We will...
Thank you.
Get this written up and sent off to you.
This is typically something that we produce for signature at our next meeting, which is thirty days hence. Is that, is that sufficient time or...
Well, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that because I'm, I'm going to, the case in Boston has been continued. But I know I need another two weeks from that to get, to make sure that there's no appeal. But that's fine, as long, as long as I'm assigned one, that's fine.
If that's fine with you, I agree with you. Then we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Be here, Arthur.
Be here, John.
Same, designed by someone. It's all good for me.
That's why we have her. She's been with me, she says I'm...
I know, I know.
All right, next.
Thank you. See, packed then. That's all that was required.
Well, it changed, he said most recent... So it had been that, but then it changed.
Gee, you keep going from a scowl to a smile.
Okay. Case number fifteen oh-three, Artistic Landscapes. One-one-one, Newburyport, Turnpike.
Yes.
Tony Hurley, for a special permit. Anybody have any conflict of interest in this case? No?
No.
No?
Okay. See, we have the applications.
Application, yes. Does the application fall down?
Yeah. It's on the back. It's on the back of the clearance form. Again.
Oh, okay.
That's weird.
At least mine is. I don't know where yours is.
Thank you. Let me just see, I'm looking for this next one.
Okay. Another application. Artistic Landscapes LLC, One-Saw Millway, Georgetown. They're asking for variance in the requirements of eight point four point five point one, the value protectors only by law. And it's shown in the assesses map fourteen, block seventeen, and it's in the business light industrial section. It's also in municipal water supply overlay.
Oh, great.
Registry of deeds recorded in the assesses registry of deeds, South District, at book number three-one-nine-two-one, page oh-two-five. He's asking for install a raceway mounted channel letter sign on the building. The reason for the request is bylaws allow for a business to have a ten-square-foot sign attached to the building. The post sign is larger than ten square feet, as it is fifty-six square feet at most, and thirty square feet for the majority of the sign.
Yes. This is it.
Okay, that's it.
Right there.
Okay. So that's, that's the application. And this hearing has been, can I ask if anybody? Notice of, this application was posted at Town Hall in Central Surfride, this divides the interest, and was posted in the Town Common on one October two thousand fourteen and October eighth two thousand fourteen. And reads as follows. The public hearing will be held at Town Hall Annex thirty-nine Central Street on Thursday, October sixteenth two thousand fourteen. At seven-thirty PM to act on the application received September third two thousand fourteen from Artistic Landscapes LLC, career Tony Hurley of One-Saw Millway, Georgetown, Mass. The applicant is requesting a special permit from the board who appears for installing a sign with the requirements of section eight point five point four point one of the value protectors only bylaws. Property is located at one-one-one, Newburyport, Turnpike, Rowan, Mass. The property is in the business light HD district and is shown in the assesses map fourteen, block seventeen. At the public hearing, members may ask, public, at the public hearing, members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that support the approval or denial of this application. Okay. Who is speaking for Mr. Hurley?
Oh, Mr. Hurley. I hear you.
Okay, Mr. Hurley, you got the floor.
Okay, the thirty square feet is related to the name Artistic Landscapes, but the P in landscapes goes below the rest of the letters. So if you were to assume that the bottom of the P went all the way across, that would get it to the fifty-six square feet. And I just wanted to point that out and make sure it was understood. So that's why I said the majority of the sign is thirty square feet. It's just that one, the lower part of the P that extends beyond that range.
Okay, is this a lighted sign?
It is.
So that's what you're asking for?
You're looking, I believe, for the sign being greater than ten square feet than the planning board is approving or voting on the illumination portion. So they could tell me that I cannot illuminate it, but you can say I can have the size.
Okay. Where in the building is it going?
This point between the first floor and the second floor. If I went above the second floor...
On the front of the building or on the side of the building?
On the front facing Route one.
Okay, where do you consider the front?
This is the front. The doors. This is what we see when you drive by, this is what you see. You see the second story full of glass, which I think could be offices.
Correct.
And then there's, I don't know if that's offices or just glass for light done on this floor. There's, this is the front elevation. This is the side elevation because it's raised in the front. So this, this technically sits in a like that. A building looks like that. So he's asking for it to go, it's going to go right in here, is where he wants to put it. Which is at the end of the elevation machine.
It's a slipboard.
Here's the building.
Right.
Okay, he wants to start right here.
Oh, okay, so this is how much.
Here's, yeah, here's, here's Route one right down there. So here's his two entrances.
Right.
They don't go in like this.
Okay, I know it's a plan. So this is going up. Up here somewhere.
What, what is, what is this?
Now, here, the side.
Now, the side is going right here.
It's going to be on the side here.
Right there.
Facing.
Facing out onto Route one as you drive by. Tony, could you talk a little bit about either when you came before the board last summer?
Right.
We had some general conversation about where this might end up going in terms of the signage issue. And either we missed it, or I missed it, or I forgot, or I don't see. I see it noted here. I certainly recognize the additional street signage that is going to be present on the property. You've got two, I would say, they appear to be twelve to fifteen-foot posts. Can you talk a little bit about what that signage is going to be?
That sign will say it's internally illuminated, and it'll say Artistic Landscapes and give the phone number.
How, how big is, those go up about fifteen feet. Is it going to be like the upper three feet, seven feet?
I think it's...
Roughly?
Maybe the upper three or four feet, and then there's like a two-foot area that'll be with a white or opaque background that can change letters, and that's not illuminated or anything. So, kind of a changing board.
You mean like specials, that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So somebody's going to climb up there and put stuff up.
Or I think you use a stick, whatever.
Yeah.
So, so that'll be fixed, and that's out there. And then this would be separate and on the building. And when we talked, I, six months ago or ten months ago, the thought was that the planning board had to approve the illuminated sign on the building. But subsequently, so then the planning board did not vote on it, thinking that the zoning board needed to vote on it. After some deliberation and involvement of legal counsel for the town, it was decided that the best protocol would be to have you look at it for the size and then have the planning board look at it for the elimination. And if I put the name above the second floor windows, then I'm exceeding the twenty-foot limit that the town has. So that would have to be another variance, and I decided not to ask for that because I have the physical space between the two layers.
Okay. My, my question is... You, you came to us previously and you talked about what your business was and so forth. And I was left with the impression that you don't do business with the general public.
That's correct.
So why do you need all these signs?
Because I need the general public to get in contact with me so I can go to their house and build them their walls, build them their patios, put in their lighting systems. They need to know that I exist.
I'm missing something.
If it's, I'm looking to build what I consider a very nice building that will look very nice on Route one in Round.
I'm not, I'm not questioning.
No, but as the general public goes by, if they don't know who owns that building, they're not going to call me. Thus, I will go out of business and not be able to pay anything. So if I have my...
But you don't do business with the general public.
The general public can't come to me and say, I wanna buy three bricks from you. But they, I work for residential people, individuals, and do work at their homes. They don't come to me to buy a bag of grassy. I go to their house and put in a lighting system.
Oh, okay. All right. I get it.
You know, I, I think perhaps what the chairman's question is, I think we understand that you're not a retailer. That principally people will not drive by and say, oh, I'm gonna run in there and get some plants. Or, oh, it's Halloween, I want some mums or whatever. I, I think we understand that. But I do think there's some valid question about... Because I don't recall the other sign being there. There are a lot of businesses around town, commercial properties, who are purely wholesale companies.
Okay.
And their only signage is with a lot larger physical structure than yours. And their only signage is certainly equal to or less than what you're going to have on your, your, your business sign right on Route one, which is what most of us would certainly see as well.
Okay.
And I, I think there's some question as to why this, this has an aura, even though it's a good looking building and it's a great improvement to the site, it has an orientation of it being retail. And I think that the chairman's question is, um, for the board, is that we need to have, do we need signage, additional signage, which is repeating something that's fifty feet away? To this size, even though from what I can look at on the, on the building itself, it's, it's probably not large. I can see like ten feet would be a constraint for you on that building. I mean, ten square feet would be about that area probably above the blackboard. Which, well, you have as a word, you don't have any, anything else. So I guess the question is whether or not you feel you wanna, we need to actually approve that much extra space for it, even though, you know, it's clear it's right down here.
My, my, my feeling on, on the whole thing is... I'm not opposed to the Artistic Landscapes to be on the side of this building. But I am opposed to having a lighted sign there, so.
Well, that's not within our jurisdiction.
Hmm?
That's not within our jurisdiction.
I don't think that's our jurisdiction.
I mean, we can grant whatever we want to grant him. We could give him eighty feet and they'd say, well, if you gave him eighty feet, you give him eighty feet. And they could choose to take a lighted or not.
I have a much bigger problem, which is the same problem I had a year ago. And it's the same problem the town council raised and in my opinion didn't answer in their letter. Which was, where's our jurisdiction to grant a variance? I mean, we grant a variance under forty A. And if you read forty A, it has to do with topography, soil size. Town council has given us a letter and said, well, you know, maybe. I, I just... No, this is a variance we're asked to give.
Read it.
This is a variance.
Why is that a special permit?
No, it's a variance.
Why?
Well, it's a, read the application, it's a variance. That's what I'm saying. The applicant has the, this is a variance. And town council wrote a letter on it in that unfortunately, I mean, it was a nice letter. It addressed a bunch of points, but it wasn't definitive.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, okay. The application. The application does say requests a variance, doesn't it? So if we're gonna give a variance, I think, I think we have to be... All right, no limit, limit. It's requested for variance under eight four five one. But the ad in the paper says it's requesting a special permit. Well, oh boy.
Well, that's very good.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize it was misadvertised. If, if it's misadvertised, you've got a bigger problem. Mr. Chairman. Which means you really gotta re-advertise it.
Why is it? He wants a variance. Variance is damn hard to grant.
Yeah.
Practically a ninety percent, ninety percent no. So why he wants a variance, I don't know.
Because he doesn't have any choice.
Okay.
Because in order for us to grant him anything, it has to be a variance from... He's caught between the literal language of the statute and the literal language of the bylaw. And the literal language of the bylaws is that the size of the sign requires a variance. I, I, I mean, I'm sympathetic.
I don't know how you do a variance.
I, I, I agree, I agree.
A variance, all of the variances I've ever run into are all on land.
Which is exactly what town council's letter spells out. And alludes to the fact that there might be some room, but, but isn't specific enough for my taste to, to say we're on good ground to, to grant such a variance. And I'm, I'm, I'm reluctant to vote because I, I, at this point, I think I'd have to vote no, but I would rather...
Get him a draw.
Well, no, I, I, I just, well, town council says there's some case law that says this and it says... I, I, I wouldn't mind, um, you know, giving the applicant as much leeway to, to present a case. Because I, I, I hardly think it's a outrageous request. I mean, I, I am sympathetic to the request and I'm sympathetic to his dilemma. But I don't have the answer.
I, I think you're right. I, I think there's a dilemma here that creates a gray area for us in terms of interpreting where we wanna go with a variance. Town council's law makes generic reference to some case law being present. That where, where zoning boards have granted variances under requests for sign modification.
But it depends on the bylaw of the town.
Well, I, I, exactly. And, and I, and I think, you know, uh... I think part of the question is, do we, because it's hard, I agree with you. It's, it's hard to make, to interpret his argument as a strong enough case to hang our hat fully on it. So there's an economic hardship there. I think that there was a more clear economic hardship that existed because the building was in a much poorer location with much less visibility, which would be something, something created by a topographical issue. It would be easier to say, okay, we can do that. I still think it's, there's a gray area in here. And the, the, you know, I think we, we can either simply... I, I'm not sure we can't go into that gray area. And if we were to grant the, the additional size, um, you know, the applicant is simply subject to an appeal. An appeal doesn't occur, then it, then it goes forward. And he has to realize that, you know, we're, if we go in that direction, we're operating in a gray area. If someone is really opposed to that signage being there and they wanna dispute it, they can prevent that sign from going there and appeal it and then it just ends up. And if they can demonstrate case law would support them, okay, then you might, you might lose the argument. Or obviously, we can simply say, we're not gonna grant you, we, we don't wanna go there. We don't wanna go down the road of, of that gray area. We're gonna stay strictly within the confines of, we can't grant a variance because there's not enough conditions here for us to step out on a limb and take a chance with it because it's not clear there's an economic hardship at all. You've got a sign down the street, fifty feet further down on the property. It's adequate signage for what you're doing. You're not retail. It's not like you need to tell people more that that's your property. Everyone assumes that's your property and that's the business that's located there. And so, no, we're not, we're not gonna grant a variance subject to the request. You'll have to stay within the sign. If the planning board wants to go forward and then within ten feet, grant illumination, that's their business.
Right.
Tony. A question I have, it says here, uh, for a variance within the requirements of section eight, four, five, one. Eight, five, four, eight, four, five, one. In my book here says each business within a building. Are there more businesses within that building?
No.
Then why eight, four, five, one?
Because he is... It could be read as any, any business within a building. Could be the same reading, I guess.
Yeah, because if there were multiple, if there were a strict...
I don't think it's restricted to multiple, but...
Right.
But look, may, may I, let me offer a potential opportunity to... If it was advertised as a special permit to the public and it's a variance, I think you've got a procedural problem. Okay? And, and, and if it, if it were to be reopened somehow, that time within which to do that could also be time used to explore the other issues. But I'm just concerned, I mean, if you've advertised it as a special permit and it's a variance, I don't know if it's valid on its face.
That strikes me as, it strikes me as a valid point, but once a board advertises, we have in the past, advertised an application for a public hearing under the conditions under which the applicant approached the board. Upon review of the case, the board determined that it could not function and, and approve under the conditions that, that applicant requested, but could in fact approve under different conditions.
Yeah.
And the board would go forward with that approval with those, with those new conditions because the board determined that, you know what, the way you want it doesn't work, but we can do it this way. And, and I, I don't have a pro, I think the one component, one component of what you're talking about, which would be, I, I don't think, I think Tony is coming to us more on the size issue. I don't know that the planning board's issue about illumination.
No, I'm talking about the fact that we advertised a special permit.
I understand.
He's asking for a variance.
I understand that, but I, but I think, I, I'm, I'm not sure the distinction, I'm not sure people are looking at the advertisement. I don't know if this would be the procedural issue and say, well, it's a, it's a special permit, I don't care about that. But if it was a variance, I'd be there.
Well, I don't know.
You know, and I mean, and that's...
No, no, I know, it's probably, you're, you're right. Chances are, nobody would care.
Would pick.
I'm talking about whether we can grant, you, you could go the other way. If you advertised the variance and then came down to a special permit, you'd say, well, he's asking for a little less. And so he's asking, so, but by asking for a variance when you only advertise as a special permit is actually legally, you're asking for more than was advertised, not less than was advertised.
Okay. Let's, let's ask Tony a question.
Can, can we check, can I check the different box from variance to special permit? To me, it's all, I don't know what the difference is between a variance and a special permit.
Huge, huge.
So.
It's a different, yeah, it's procedurally different. And however, part of, part of the ultimate question here, however it's decided, we, we proceed, impacts time.
Right.
If, if we, and, and I think you're right, Bob. I think maybe we need to find out, did we make a procedural, do we have a procedural misstep? If that's the case, does that preclude you from going forward and going to the planning board and say, listen, guys, they're, they're still working over there on that. They, they've got a couple of issues, including the nature of the advertising they gotta resolve before they decide what they really wanna do. But one way or the other, it might be thirty feet, it might be twenty-two feet, I want an illuminated sign. Are you gonna give me that regardless of what that is? So you go do that. Are you, if we're forced to close, if we're forced to reopen the hearing, it's gonna push out at least another thirty days, another advertising, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Is that, is that, does that create a dilemma for you?
I can live with it.
Because I, I would rather in, I would rather continue it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and approach town council and say, give us opinion, do we have a procedural issue here? And if we do, uh, then we either have to close the hearing and re-advertise it and just open it under the, the original request. And then we address that.
Why don't we just close it and, and reopen it after next month? Re-advertise it next month as a special permit. Yeah, yeah. I, I agree, I agree. I wouldn't ask town council, I wouldn't waste the time on that. I'd re-advertise it as a variance. As, as a special permit. No, it's advertise as special, you gotta advertise it as a variance.
Right.
How's it advertised as a variance?
Well, because that's, that's the issue.
Because that's the application.
That's the, well, if we close it and he re-applys, he can apply it or whatever, the issue, but we can only...
Sure.
But we can only really...
But I think he still has to request it under a variance.
Yeah, right.
You're going on to the fact that the applicant knows the difference between what he's asking for here, whether it's a variance or whether it should be a special permit. Over the years, we have had these come in and they, and we say, no, that's the wrong one. And we, we say, this is the one we're operating under and have advertised that way. Because applicants haven't had the foggiest idea of what they were checking on.
Okay.
Well, that goes to the, that goes to the point I was making, is that the board has reviewed an application and found its ability to approve under a different, a different bylaw than the one under which the applicant applied.
Well, I, I don't wanna be dogmatic about it. What was our conversation? What, what was, what was my conversation with you? We don't do variance, it's great.
Right. That's why I advertise it as a special permit.
Okay, again, I don't wanna be dogmatic about it. I'll, if, if the board thinks that we can entertain it, having been advertised, and...
This, it hasn't been advertised, this hasn't been advertised, the application?
Yeah, it has, as a special permit. Not as a variance.
This page hasn't been advertised.
No.
So we're the only ones that have seen this here.
Right. And the public thinks we're entertaining... And the public thinks we're entertaining a special permit.
How does the public think we are?
Because it was advertised in the paper as a special permit.
You just said... I understood you to say that the public thinks it's a variance.
No. No, contrary. The public thinks it's a special permit.
Yeah.
And it's not.
Yes, it is.
Well, now, the other...
No, it's a variance.
The other variable that comes into...
Just because he asks for this, I'm not going to agree with you.
No, no, no. I think that, you know... I think Bob's point is, is the board isn't... Can't rely on an applicant's interpretation of verbiage that they may not understand to determine what direction the board should look.
And that's what I'm saying.
And what town council did is, in clarifying the issue between whether the planning board sees the illuminated sign or we see it, and defining that, they also pointed out that typically, variances are granted when there's... A special permit's are granted when it relates to a use issue. There's really nothing here that is associated with the use of the building, of the property, or the structure. He's not asking us to make it, you know, I want to advertise a different kind of business as well as the kind of business I have. There's no use variable here. And that's clearly pointing down at the town council's letter. What's gray, as the town council points out, which goes back to my point, is there's some case law out there somewhere, evidently, in which towns have used the variance definition to grant the expansion of signage and said, well, it does sort of represent, you know, a way to look at the property in a different way by expanding it. It's not as explicit. It's gray, to be sure. But it does function under the variance. As opposed, we can't really get him the special permit. He's not asking for a special permit functionality. He's not asking us to say, give me 20 more square feet. Give me... Expand my floor plan. I've got a funny-sized lot. You know, I need to be closer to the... You know, I need to be closer to the setback because of where my building's going. He asked us for some of those things originally, and we gave him a special permit to do that stuff. He wanted to put the storage bins in the back, right up against the back line, and that required a special permit. For us to say, okay, you can go outside the normal setbacks. So, you know, I'm... I think you're right, Nat. We either just... We either say... I guess we close the hearing with a finding that it was misadvertised. And then we reopen another hearing under a variance, and then we review the material, as we are tonight, and proceed at that point. If there's any question about that, that's gone.
I think...
Procedural.
I think it's important, though, to address Nat's issue. I think Nat was under the impression that we could change it from a variance to a special permit and perhaps grant it.
We have.
We've done that.
We've been doing that regularly in the past.
And he's not asking for a special permit. He wants a variance because it's the only thing that can allow him to do it. That's the problem. It's a variance up or down. There's no allowance... There's no issue here about that he can get a special permit. He doesn't want one. He's not asking for one. He wants a variance. That's the problem. It's not changing it from a variance to a special permit. It's re-advertising it as a variance.
Well, I would hope that he would correct it in what he asked for.
But he can't... But there's no provision to allow a special permit for what he wants. That's his problem. If somebody can show me where he can get what he wants by a special permit, great. But I haven't seen that. He doesn't see it. Nobody else sees it. That's the problem. If we could change it from a variance to a special permit, I'm with you. But I don't think so. I think it's a variance up or down. And that's why I'm not sure we want to vote on that.
Well, the thing is, is that the application states that the error is in the advertising.
Yeah, that's a procedural issue. In other words, that stands by itself.
Yeah, well, see, I mean, the application is, in my mind, correctly submitted as a request for a variance.
I agree.
You're right?
Yeah.
So, in my mind, the only question is, do we stop the process and restart it because of the advertising procedural issue? Or do we simply say, you know, it's properly filed under the right bylaw for the board to act, so the board's going to act under the application as it was submitted?
And if anybody wanted to come read it, they could have, and they'd know, and then there's no...
Well, plus, as I say, on the backside of it, everybody has 20 days of appeal.
See, he's going to get a special permit and then a variance.
Sure. Yeah.
All right. So, he's asking for the hardest one.
Which wasn't advertised.
Which wasn't advertised.
And besides, I don't think Nat's going to vote for a variance. I don't think I'm going to vote for a variance. How does he win on that? Not tonight. Not on these facts.
Well, I don't know that the... I don't know that the... I don't see that there are any facts that are going to change terribly much, do you? I mean, what fact might change...
No. Town council's letter that says that there actually are times when you can grant a variance that isn't related totally to those things. They allude to that on the second page of their opinion.
Yeah, no, they say it.
But they don't really give us anything to hang our hat on.
No, that's true.
And if... I thought, Tom, you raised a great point when you were referring to the fact that the land, I think, dips down so much behind... You know how the land dips down behind Route 1 and goes down there? Well, that's the topography. So, if somehow the topography of that land, and therefore, the building that it sits on, affects where the sign is, you know, I can see doing a little...
Well, that's where I think we move into a sufficiently good area.
No. He doesn't need us if he wants to just put a sign up there. He can, as long as he provides with the...
Right.
With bylaw.
That's absolutely correct.
No, that's true. That's another option.
Right.
But then he would have to choose to...
He'd just have to have a smaller sign.
Yeah.
I guess he could put in a smaller sign and then come back for a bigger one later, if he's still...
Probably has one best amount.
No, I go by the site. I know what he's asking for. It doesn't offend me that he's... You know, it's not like, oh, my gosh, that's crazy. It's not like that. I mean, I think it's a realistic request. Unfortunately, given the interplay of Chapter 48 and the bylaw, he's got to get a variance to get it. And this board is loath to give variances.
Well, the courts have said the same thing on variances.
Right.
Like, be used sparingly.
I don't... I don't disagree with you on that. I think... It's the town council's letter.
Yeah. I haven't seen it before. I don't think I've heard from before.
Tony, do you have any interest in changing your need for a sign of this size? Not to 10 square feet, because you can't read that from Route 1. The setback from Route 1 and then being the downhill, you just can't see that. The artistic... If artistic landscapes only had three letters, then, or four or five letters, you could see it on 10 square feet. It's just too many letters to make it visible.
You're only going to see it southbound anyway, aren't you? Or can you actually see it northbound?
You can see northbound.
Yeah.
That's why it's at the north end of the building, so that you can see it both ways.
Well, town council says, "Yet the statute clearly allows for variances for structures, and my cursory review of case law finds some instances where variances of sign dimensions were granted, but I found none in which applicability of the soil conditions, shape, or topography tests was discussed." I mean, in one instance, the applicant has the burden of bringing case law to us that says, here's how you can do it. But town council's already been asked once. Town council already has the cases in mind. And perhaps if town council was asked just straightforward, you know, read the Rowley's bylaw, is there any more guidance you can give us? Granted, it takes a little more time, but it might give the applicant a little better shot.
Yeah, because the Chapter 48 says on the variances, as you quoted, as she did, soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land. And that's only one of, say, three or four sections that's got to meet.
Yeah, it has to be a hardship related to one of those.
Right.
But he does have, you know, we all know where the building sits, and the topography there is not level with Route 1.
Pure stones.
So, I mean, I could see... I could see making the argument, but...
I suggest that we close this re-advertising for next month. Re-advertising as a variance.
All right, close that door. Nobody can say...
I mean, we can do that. I mean, we're certainly not going to add before next month anything on the subject.
Right. So, close that door.
So, I mean, that's one way to address that subject.
I think so.
And just let it...
Let it go.
What is... How do we find if we close the hearing? How do we handle the application? Does the board acknowledge and simply re-accept without fee the application? I don't see why you should have to pay another fee for it.
Yeah. We have to... Well, can we allow him to amend, subject to a re-advertising? Tell him he can... No, he doesn't have to amend.
No.
No, he didn't do anything.
And then we couldn't grant the way he...
No, he doesn't have to amend.
No. I don't know how you address that, you know, the descriptive variation that exists between what the advertising said. Because we can't even deny it, because it's not deniable under the condition that we're looking to evaluate it under. It can't be approved, except for the fact that it's...
Why don't you say, continue then?
Why don't we continue it and just re-advertise it?
With the applicant's approval, I think we...
Yeah.
Because he doesn't have to... Well, sure, some. I mean, it's like when somebody has to ask you to continue it.
Yeah.
I have a form here, which Lisa has been busy upstairs doing things for us. It says here, "This only Board of Appeals, 39 Central Street, Raleigh, Mass. One. I wish to continue tonight with my hearing, fully knowing that only four members of the board are present, not the usual five. And in order for my application to be granted, all four board members must get out from their decision. Two. I wish to postpone my hearing to the next public hearing date, due to only four members are present, and so forth. And three. I wish to continue my hearing to the next public hearing date of... And I wish to withdraw my application for the only Rowley's only Board of Appeals without prejudice, and understand that I may re-apply at a more suitable time. And five. Agree to extend the time limit for actions of the Rowley's only Board of Appeals on addition.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, which one you...
Which one we want to use.
Right. I think...
But you've got to give the applicant the choice, too.
Right. But give you the choice.
I think...
Which one can we open?
Does the fourth one, does that allow for a re-advertising? It doesn't sound like it does.
No, none of them do.
No, none of them do.
Does it make more sense for me to draw?
We could do the advertising anyway.
Right.
I think... I think what you need to do is to continue hearing to allow us to re-advertise it. You can put those words inside this... This is from down here. Wish to continue.
Sure.
Okay.
So, it can be re-advertising.
Yes.
So, it can be re-advertising.
All I can say, gentlemen, it's a good thing we're not still working with carbon paper.
Well, I think that we...
Can you imagine?
No.
With carbon paper?
Go to continue. Subject to re-advertising.
Then you make... No, yeah, and then you make a mistake. And you can't...
Oh, I remember. Trust me, I remember those days.
If we do that. If I go back further, then...
Not that much, though.
If you still think we should go further than this, we can do that. We can inquire just to say, can you... Paragraph two, you say that? You know, we can do that.
Yes.
Gee, Lisa, thanks very much for giving us some of that. Coming up with paperwork.
As I told my wife, I thought I'd be home at 9:00.
You've been dreaming. I said this was a late one. Still lucky with some of the other ones, but... Right.
Put your data on it, Tom.
I, Tony Hurley, of Artistic Landscapes LLC, wish to continue my hearing to next public hearing date of November 20, 2014, so that this hearing can be re-advertising to save variance rather than special permit.
That's fine. I make a motion that the board accepts the request from the applicant to re-advertise said case, and that in the interim, the board directs the clerk to reach out to town council with specific reference to their letter of August 6, 2014, page 2, paragraph 2, in which the town council states, "Yet the statute clearly allows for variances for structures, and my cursory review of case law finds some instances where variances of signed dimensions were granted," quote unquote, and that we ask for clarification about what those cases were, if you can provide it, me or she can provide it.
You can take shorthand. How do you write it, then?
She has everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably shorthand isn't used anymore.
It's all on hand.
It's kind of a dying art.
Well, it's all...
It's gone, right?
I think so.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Okay, good. Thanks.
I need a sixty-second...
Oh, yeah, let's take a five...
If you want to read something, I'll be right back. I won't be five minutes. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Donald? Is he not going to shut it off? Because he's new. He's new, but he's...
We're going to recess, so shut it off.
One of you strong guys, put that window down. I'm not going to...
Public hearings be held at the Town Hall Annex 39 Central Street on Thursday, October 16th, 2014 at 8:00 PM direct on an application received September 3rd, 2014 from Sean Blair at 887 Havel Street, Raleigh, Mass. Applicant is requesting an appeal from the review of decision from the Raleigh Building Inspector from the Board of Appeals. Properties located at 887 Havel Street, Raleigh, Mass, and properties in the outline district and as shown in the assessors map for block 36. At the public hearing, members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that supports either approval or denial of this petition. Purpose of this hearing is to get the board to hear and consider pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve with conditions or deny. Sean Blair, mailing address 887 Havel Street, Raleigh, Mass. Name, ownership of Sean Blair, 887 Havel Street. Is a party agreed for review of decision made by the building inspector. See attached decision. Land is in assessors map number four, block number 36. It's in the outline district and there's no overlay or floodplain or water shit. Feed is recorded as expressly deet, number 28121 and page 53. There's another page to it somewhere. Okay, I'm gonna read some letters that you've got here first.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you do that, my name's Chip Niall and I'm representing the petitioner. You read, the first thing that you read referenced a special permit. Everything that you've read since then has been appropriate. Can you just tell me what, were you reading from the newspaper, the first thing that you read? Because if you did, it's incorrect. We're not asking for a special permit and I'd like to just address that right away. If there's a deficiency like you had on the last one, we can't go forward.
The case, as in the paper, it's a valid point. The case in the paper, applicant requesting an appeal for the review of the decision from the Raleigh Building Inspector. That's what was in the paper, so there wasn't a mention there.
I heard him mention an application for a special permit, that's why I paused. So that, the first thing he read, and I don't know where he read that from, but if that's the application from the newspaper, then that's fine.
Yeah, and your application says a party.
Yeah, mine's, yeah, mine's fine. I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, I don't see any of that.
I don't know where, but he specifically said special permit, but...
Yeah, I did.
You may have misspoke. Oh, I see, up top. The public hearing, that's our, for a special permit, from an appeal from the Raleigh Building Inspector.
Oh, oh, okay. But the advertisement.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, it's all right, because the application asks for states requesting, applicant is requesting an appeal from the review of the decision of the fourth building.
Yeah, no, no, I'm all set. But you went through, you spent 45 minutes at the last fear, and you were right from the beginning, which is you couldn't hear that. So I didn't want you to have to go through that exercise again, but we're okay.
Right, yeah, so, okay. Thanks for bringing that up. It's right up here.
I see, okay.
That's what I was reading.
Good, I didn't have it in front of me, thank you.
We have several letters. What would you name again?
Niall, Chip Niall. My, I signed the...
Yeah, okay, okay. You're Richard Niall.
Richard, yeah, I've been Chip for 63 years, I can't get rid of it. Makes me feel young.
All right. I have a couple of letters here that I, they're kind of like boilerplate that we get them from all the different departments and so forth, and some of them, they don't care what we do. This one here is from the town planner. Case number 1505, 887 Havel Street. This case does not appear to involve any planning board issues. The information submitted with this case file indicates a property owner is requesting the ZBA to consider the applicant's appeal for the decision of the building inspector to issue a cease and desist operation order based on evidence that septic system installation business has a home occupation uses proliferating on the site. The planning board therefore refers to the expertise and jurisdiction of the building inspector's zoning board appeals matter. One from the Board of Select, requiring an application from Sean Blair to the ZBA on appeal to cease and desist order by the building inspector for operating a septic installation business as a customary home occupation. The Board of Select recommended that the ZBA review this application with the town's attorney and will ask the building inspector to attend the meeting. And the Board of Health, the Raleigh Board of Health licenses individuals to install sub-service sewage disposal systems on-site in the town of Raleigh. Sean Blair is currently a licensed septic system installer with the Raleigh Board of And a couple on here from the Conservation Commission. Application question, appeal to building inspector's use decision, case number 15.05, 887 Havel Consequence number one, the conservation department notes that on page one of the application, question four, is checked as none in response to consequences of the overlay district. According to records generally available in our office, as well as accompanying assessors map, the property contains muddy brook in a FEMA designated special flood hazard area zone A. The property appears to be within the floodplain and water chip overlay district. Two, conservation department is trying to review and examine the included plan sheet titled existing conditions, site plan, land prepared by William G. Holt and dated January 18th, 2012. Learned from the ZBA are that this was not the final signed and stamped version of this plan. The 11 by 17 inch, 11 inch by 17 inch copy, including the application package, is noted as only sheet 1 of 3 due to how it was reproduced. Most of the text on plan notes are unreadable. Three, conservation department has previously provided the zoning board with fields with documentation received from this apartment's environmental protection, which contains information they have bearing in the board members' deliberations. The conservation department suggests that the final stamped and signed version of existing conditions site plan of land should be obtained to correct the apparent deficiency within unreadable as well as early version of that plan being included in the application package. Okay.
Do you have the Board of Select?
I don't know where.
You have the Select? Do you have, do you have, you have Kansas, did you read Kansas?
Are you gonna go over this letter that you sent us?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna, so I'm not gonna read that.
This letter. This is his letter.
Okay, I've got a bunch of emails.
Yeah, that's, that's administrative, I think.
Okay. And we've got one from the building inspector. Dear Darn, after reading the letter from Attorney Niall, I felt compelled to respond. First of all, I never said that the principal use of property at 887 Havel Street wasn't any single-family dwelling or farm. Secondly, I told Mr. Blair that I believe that the septic business, which is registered with the Board of Health at 887 Havel Street, wasn't a customary home occupation. This is due to the fact that he admitted to me that he had more than one truck and employees. Attorney Niall also admits that they're our employees. Only customary home occupations are allowed in the outline district, no other businesses are allowed. Now, the big sheet is, from the back, from the back, start with 10-1. I have a list here of Raleigh installers in the town of Raleigh, SJ Glen Excavation, 887 Havel Street, listed. And use regulations, customary home occupation, section 3124, customary home occupation of professional purpose conducted by a resident of the structure in which it is conducted. In the outline district. So that's the same thing. Okay.
Is it appropriate for me to sit here, or what are most, I haven't...
You can stand there and make your dissertation, or you can sit at the table.
Okay.
No bikes, no difference to us. You can, can you set that up and...
That's designed to be set up under there, and you can perhaps talk at point.
Is that, figure out how to do that. Pretty simple, huh? Okay, so, as I said, my name is Chip Niall, I'm from Ipswich, but I practice out of Boston. I don't think I've been in front of the board before, so, good evening. Most importantly, I just want to tell you the Patriots are winning seven to six, so I won't let you know that.
Word.
And I...
Seven to six?
Seven to six.
Nothing much. Mostly in the first corner.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure about that, but somebody's just sent me, sent me a text. So we're, we're here this evening because of what I think is an error in the way that the building inspector is regulating what's going on in the property. And for purposes of what we submitted, and I did hear from the, from the board with respect to the plan, this is the plan that we provided to you, except it was smaller, just by virtue of what happens when we have to submit things, but really, the issue isn't what's on the plan, it really is what's the use of the, of the property. And so there may be some updates, but I don't think that they're relevant to the question that's in front of you, which is what's going on out there. So, this is called Blairwood Farms. Under your tax assessor, which I presented to you, it's 61A, so it's assessed in the town as farm property. It's a single-family house out there, it's 13 acres. Mr. Blair purchased the property about six years ago and it was in great disrepair. I included in my sort of short discussion what he's been doing for the last six years. First, what he had to do was he had to clean the property up. There was debris from the past owner, and he tells me that there were four large containers full of metal and debris that he took off the property, and that took a long time for him to do. The second thing that he then did was he started to do some grading on the property. He's got a paddock, he's got an outbuilding, he's got a shed, he has chickens out there, he breeds donkeys, and he's got a relatively substantial compost area in the back of the property. Compost, the one thing I didn't provide to you, because I didn't have it at the time of the appeal, and that I'd like to provide to you, is he's registered with the Department of Agricultural Resources for composting. And compost, as you know, is an agricultural use. I don't know how many people compost in Raleigh, I have a number of clients that do it, and it's regulated by the Department of Agricultural Resources, because what they, what you have to do is follow the regulations. You bring in material, you have to screen it to eliminate paper and litter, and then you have a compost pile, and then what you, you let it sit for a number of months as it degenerates and, and becomes compost, and then you sell it. And they, they sell compost. So, out on this property, all of those activities take place, and that's what Sean wants to do, is to make this a farm over time. And he's here, by the way, and he can answer any questions that you may have with respect to what his intent is and what he has done, and I think it's included within my filing and it's readily observable if you go by the property, that that's what he wants to do, is to have a farm out there. Now, as part of the equipment that he has for the work that he's done out there, he's got a bobcat, he's, he's got a sorter for the, for the compost, and he has other vehicles that he uses to move compost around, to do all the physical work necessary in terms of grading the property, and to do the work in maintaining a farm. Now, the other thing that Sean does is he installs septic systems, but none of that work takes place out at this property. There's no materials associated with septic, if you know, in this area, we know how septic systems are built. You know, that you have to have gravel, and you have to have septic sands, and those are materials that are not, there are none of those on this property, and I don't think the building inspector has suggested those things are on the property. So in terms of running a business, there is no activity out there with respect to the, to the septic business. Now, like any other home occupation, any other tradesman, electrician, plumber, anybody else, he may do bills in his house like everybody else does, but he doesn't do any work. You don't go to his, to Havel Street to get your septic system installed, you don't, he doesn't take materials from Havel Street and bring it to, to other parties, because when you're installing septic systems, there's, there's a lot of material that's involved, and so he doesn't do that. So, my concern is to get a cease and desist, I don't know what we cease and desist from doing, because the trucks and the other material, equipment that are out there are all related to the farm, so you can't tell him he can't use that material, those trucks and that equipment, because he needs that for the work that he's doing in, in creating and, and enhancing the, enhancing the farm. So the way, so I appealed it now, he's correct, the building inspector, when I listened to him and I was, as I read his decision, I said that there were two points, that one, it's not a principal use, septic installation, not a principal use, the principal use is the single-family house and the farm. And he, he agrees with us. So I guess the only issue comes down to this home occupation, and he suggests that it's a home occupation. I don't read it as a, I don't know, you interpret the, your bylaw, I don't see it as a home occupation, because a home occupation, to me, is where, you know, a lawyer or somebody does all the work at home, and, or maybe daycare or something like that. Here, the occupation's taking place off-site. Now, there's no home occupation associated with the work, other than billing, as I said, that's what, you know, lots of tradesmen in this town and all over the North Shore do, but there's, so I, I didn't see how that fit, but I will say that the work that he does in terms of billing certainly doesn't alter the bill, the character of the building. As you, you read the definition of home occupation, which I have in my submission, occupation is continuously carried entirely within a dwelling unit by the residents of the unit, which in no way changes the character of the building. Well, sending out bills or getting a phone call once in a while certainly doesn't change the character of the building, so in that respect, it is consistent with a home occupation, but I think that what we have out there is a single-family house and a farm, and it's not a septic business, and that's why we're here to answer any questions that you have, but we're asking you to overturn the interpretation by the building inspector. Okay. Okay. I should say, Sean, do you, is it, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, so, he's, he's behind us and...
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I agree with everything that he said, so...
Hi, my name's Carol Harlehey, I'm a neighbor, and I would definitely like to add something. I've lived here 20 years. I remember when the former people used to live there. Place was a mess, a mess. These guys have come in, they've cleaned it up. There are no big septic pipes out there, there's no gravel out there, there is a horse, couple of donkeys, they spent a lot of time cleaning up the area, and to put a cease and desist order on them, I think is not a very good thing, okay? These are upstanding, these are upstanding individuals, okay? They're a credit to Raleigh, they really are, all right? And all they've done is really improve their property, they are certainly not running any type of septic out of that, out of their property. They park their truck there, but their truck is also used to move the loam, to bring in manure, to make more loam. So, you know, they're not running the business out of there. You're welcome.
Ken?
When I talked to Mr. Blair on the phone, I asked him if he had employees, and he said yes. I asked him if he had more than one truck, and he said yes. I didn't ask to go and look at the property, I just assumed that there was no material on the property, because I don't think anybody would be foolish enough to invite me out there if there was. But, under our definition of customary home occupation, you can't have employees, and as I said in my letter to him, I don't, can't put conditions on anything. That's up to the board. The board is the only one that can put conditions, I can't. So if he has employees, if he has more than one truck, and it's a customary home occupation, let the board deal with it.
If I may, through you to the building inspector, under the definition of home occupation, I don't see anything that restricts you from having employees. Am I, am I missing something in the, in the bylaw?
Yes.
What, where are we at?
The definition of customary home occupation.
I don't see, I, in my document, I don't have anything called customary home occupation. I only have...
Home occupation, an occupation that is customarily carried on entirely within a dwelling unit by the residents of the unit, and which in no way changes the character of the building. Nothing about employees.
Okay, well, I can tell you that there are no employees that are in that house. The only employees that would be working with Mr. Blair, and he can talk about this, would be somebody that's at the site, that he would be working with in his business, but there's, there's no, there's no work that takes place at 887 Havel Street where there would be employees in the unit. So I think when the building inspector asked my client, "Do you have employees?", he was answering truthfully, "Yes", but not employees out at 887, and, and so, and I think that's a, I think that's a substantial difference, because the, the only people that are in the dwelling unit would be Mr. Blair and a significant other, so it wouldn't, there's no employees out there. And in terms of, again, having more than one truck, I don't see anything in home occupation that limits you from having more than one truck on a farm to, to do the work that we've talked about.
Mr. Niall?
Sure.
Do I take it from what you're saying that if this board were to impose conditions, that you would not oppose a condition such as employees will not use this residence as a base of operations, will not come and, you know, operate out of this property, that employees will only operate at the site where a septic is being installed and, and, you know, won't, won't be coming and going from Havel Street? Is that okay?
They wouldn't use, I mean, they might come on to the property, but they certainly wouldn't use the unit of the building, and we wouldn't have any problem with that condition.
No, no.
It's my recents.
You don't want them on the, on the property at all?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to flush out. Does he have employees that arrive in the morning and take a truck and go off the property to pick up gravel to where he's doing work? Does he have employees that come to the site, park their car, and leave in one of his vehicles?
So I would imagine that on, on certain occasions, if he's not able to do certain work, that an employee could take a truck to a site, yes, but that's not something that's in the ordinary, in the ordinary course, so, but it would happen on occasion if somebody was pitching, you know, pitching in to help him out, that they, that he would go and take a piece of equipment, go to the site. But I'm not, if that's what the concern is, I don't, I can talk to my client, I'm not, I don't think we have an objection to that, because I think that's what the intent of the bylaw is, is that you don't have employees on the farm.
Okay, well, okay, so, if, let's assume, for the sake of argument, that it's true that your client told Mr. Ward that he had employees, so why don't you tell us who the employees are, or if you don't want to name them, how many and what they do?
Well, I think we just have one, right? We have one?
Yeah, one, one guy that works on the...
One worker, yeah, who works with him on the site.
I've got a question. Has, been saying a septic, a septic system?
Install, installation.
Installer?
Yes.
Installer? Okay, then you, you don't have a truck where you're pumping out?
No.
No, he's not, no, only wagons.
Okay, not in the van?
No, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But, to get to the question, do, would we have a problem with the employee not being on the site for, well, here's an interesting thing, is that...
How do you get the compost off the property?
Right, right, yeah, but no, but that's, but it's only in connection with the installation. That's what I, his intent is...
Oh, with the...
Yeah, because, because that person does work on the site on compost and other things, farming-related, yes, but in terms of not coming on for the septic, we, you know, we certainly...
What do you think of the percentages of farm work versus septic work?
I think that probably depends upon the season and depends upon...
Oh, annually, an average. Chapter 48 has section three that talks about farm work and products and percentages of farm products, so it wouldn't be the first time when you had to, you know, put percentages on something involved in farm work.
Yeah, we clearly, I, I don't know if it's 20% or 25 or whatever, but we clearly meet the, you know, the 500 to... the, you know, the $500 to $1,000 in, in that year.
No, I, I'm not trying to tie you to that. What I'm saying is, is that asking a percentage regarding a farm isn't unusual. So on an annual basis, does this employee go 80% of his work as septic or 80% of his work as farm or some other percentage?
Yeah, I, well, I don't, I, we'd have to ask my client that question. I don't know the answer to that.
It all really depends on the season.
Average, 12-month average.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it half and half? Is it more, is it more than half the time that, that he's, uh, he's working on the farm or, do you have any sense?
I honestly don't know. I'd say maybe half and half. I mean, I've never kept track of that.
You know, I, going back to your point, Mr. Nyle, I think upfront is part of the dilemma that, that the building inspector brings up here is the use at the location, you know, whether the employee variable is something that additionally could be looked at, and the board has dealt with situations where home occupations that might be trade-oriented have individuals who come to a site and then leave the site.
Right.
And there have been problems with, as those companies grow, there's more and more equipment. There's extra vehicles left on the site. It becomes the eyesore for other residents, and that's, that's often when the board learns of these kinds of infractions, is forced to say, "Okay, wait a minute, you know, let's determine if it's a home occupation." And I'm wondering here, you say, "Well, I don't know." Well, you know, I'm not sure it's not a home occupation, but I'm not sure that it is. Because everywhere I look to find your company, you're pretty well advertised out there. Any, a, a simple, you know, Google of septic installers finds your name almost everywhere. So if it's, if, and, and hey, don't misunderstand me, I'm not thinking that's not a good thing. But what I'm questioning is, you know, it seems to suggest that probably your reach for septic is bigger than your reach for your farm business, number one. And number two, I think, excuse me, box point, uh, you know, the IRS probably has some notion of how much income you attribute to one business as opposed to the other. And I think that's one way we would be inclined to think about, well, you know, you know, if I'm, uh, getting 70% of my income is being written through this company, then I'm assuming that's mostly what goes on at that location. And I don't mean, I, I accept your definition. I mean, you go to site, you know? I mean, a, a company, you know, plumbers go to sites, roofers go to sites. All their business is on another site. But you're still running a substantial business out of your site on paper, more so than maybe the farm business. And I think that's where we're trying to get a feeling for use here, and that's, you know, can you respond at all on that basis?
Yeah, I think that that is all stuff that's been in the past because I don't pay for advertising, so...
Well, you may not pay for it. I, I mean, it gets listed, so you're not putting it out there?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
That's, I think that's from years ago.
Okay. Does your, is it a small part of your, your...
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sure someone's looked into it. How many septic systems have I done here in six years?
I have no idea.
Four or five, I'm sure someone's looked.
I have no idea.
I could go to the Board of Health and, you know...
Well, just tell us.
Well, how many have you done?
I think I've done five or six, six years.
In Raleigh?
In Raleigh.
Do you work in any other towns?
I do work in other towns, yes.
Do you do one per town? Do you do five per year?
It all depends on the...
On the nature of the business, I understand that.
Do you bid on it?
Do I what?
Do you bid on it?
On septic systems?
Right.
Occasionally, and usually it's, you know, if I work for someone I know. I mean, I've had septic licenses since I was 18, so, I mean, I don't think I should give them up. It's kind of if something, you know, if I needed to install a septic system and make a living, I think I should be able to.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think... Yeah, no, and I, I think the one thing that he told, but I, I've only known Sean for a short period of time. The one thing that he did tell me is, is that he loves to do the farm, but you need, you need revenue in order to build up the farm. I mean, he had to spend a lot of money in order to get the, to clean up the materials, was verified by the neighbor, and, you know, every year he puts more, he's putting it all into the property to, to get into farming. And I think at some point he would hope that that's all that he's doing. I think that's, certainly that's how he strikes me. If you want to put a condition on in terms of people not parking on for those purposes, I don't think we have a problem as long as that person is able, when he's doing the work with the, bringing the manure or is screening the compost, that he's able to be there and, you know, and is able to park there. But if you're concerned that you don't, you know, that it's going to spread, that you're going to have lots of employees that are going to park there and bring the equipment off, you know, we could certainly live with a, a condition that, that, that reached that question. The building inspector does, I think, say that the only people that can put conditions are would be, would be this board, so, I mean, I, I, I think the fact that, you know, we sent out notices and the only person who appeared is in favor, it, we're, you know, we're very, you know, isolated back there. It's a, it's a beautiful spot and, you know, we're not harming anybody, and all they're doing is actually is returning that property the way that it should be, and, and, and so hate to lose the ability to do what he's doing otherwise, that he happens to live out there.
How many, how many pieces of equipment are used on both the farm and the septic installation?
I think every one of them. I list them, and I'm, there's a, there's a pickup truck, a screener on, on page two, a backhoe, a bulldozer, bobcat, a dump truck, and an excavator. So he has used every one of those pieces in connection with his farming, in the, with the little work that he's doing on his farm.
And...
But I, he obviously doesn't use the screener for septic. No, that's, that's, I, I didn't, I didn't answer your question, right? So I guess the, um, the bulldozer, I don't know about the dump truck and the excavator. Clearly, the screener's not used in both. Sean, maybe you can help me out. We have a screener, we have a backhoe, is that used for both?
No.
Okay, the backhoe's not?
That's the, the farm machine.
Screen, okay, that's purely a, uh, it might, page two of my, uh, my letter, in the middle paragraph, I identify those.
There we go.
So the pickup truck, yes?
Yeah.
Right. The screener, no. The backhoe, no. The bulldozer?
You don't screen sand for septic use?
No, 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 that screener's on. It's a huge, it seems compost screen, it's a huge, that's what they do. It sits on, it sits on site.
It's really not mobile.
And there's no septic sand that's brought to the property either for any screening. The next one, Sean, is a bulldozer?
Farm.
Farm. The bobcat?
Both.
Both. Dump truck?
Both.
And excavator?
Both.
Okay, so of, of those, three of those are for both, and the others are just for the farming.
Okay, so for our purposes, I, I guess we have to consider the removal or, or moving on and off of the property of those, of those vehicles and how often that occurs, and, you know, if you could quantify it, it wouldn't hurt. I mean, how, how often? I mean, we tried to get to that a little earlier.
Why, in terms of...
How often the vehicles are moved or the equipment is moved on and off the property to work at septic someplace else? You, you don't want us to put a condition on there that says you can only move your vehicles once a month, i- i- if it's unrealistic. And we don't want to be able to have to say that all of that equipment is coming on and off the property to go to septic installations daily. So where's the, where, if, if there's to be a condition about moving equipment on and off, because there's equipment that's used in both, what's, what's reasonable in terms of your use of your property as a farm and how often you want to be able to move it on and off? And if you said, "All three of those pieces go on and off every day", we're going to say, "Well, wait a minute, that sounds, it sounds like a business that's more septic than anything else." And if you say, "No, no, no, those pieces of equipment only move on and off the property to go to other locations to do septic once a month, twice a month, three times a month..."
I think if we were going to do that, I think we would do it on an annual basis because, you know, I think, we talked about before, in terms of trying to figure out what that number is, it may change depending upon what the month is.
So if we ask you to draft a proposed decision, put in some kind of condition, what would you say?
Well, I would talk to my client, but I probably would be, it probably would be...
If you don't want to answer it now and you want to think about it and...
It would certainly wouldn't be half. It would be less than, it would be less than half of the time.
Okay, well, I think that's one of the things we wanted here.
I'd like to ask, ask you a question, sir. On you, for your installation, you go onto property and you reshape the property, however, whatever is necessary in order to bring in the various materials and so forth, and you do all of that. So if you've got heavy equipment, you must have, uh, something to carry it on to come off your property. You have trailers or...
I have one trailer.
And you carry the...
But you carry the excavator on?
Yeah.
Right, and do you leave the excavator on and put, if you're, if you're going to build a septic tank next door, do you leave the se- excavator there till the job's done?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
So that's not, I mean, back and forth.
Doesn't sleep at home with me, no.
No.
Yeah, no, it stays on, you know, on site and, you know, just another point of thinking, if I've been here for six years, where were all the complaints if I'm in and out so much? And where did the start?
What, what I was referring to is, well, I had, Stu Dalzell did mine 15 years ago, redid it, and he brought on a, a...
Excavator.
Excavator, and took his, took his truck away that, that he carried the excavator on, and he did all the work that he had to do, and bringing in whatever materials he had to do. And I'm just, that's what I was just...
Yeah.
That's what you do.
It's more efficient to have the material delivered from someone else up north.
Yeah.
So...
Right. Okay, that's what I, thank you.
So is that what you're, would be looking for me to come back and to propose?
It's not hypothetical, it's just, just trying to see where we're going with this.
Well, I think if, if in deep you can put conditions are, and you're concerned that this is going to become a full-blown septic installation business rather than the farm that is out there, then, you know, we can respond to that because we, you know, the farm is the most important thing, but the revenue to help us with the farm is also critical. So we'd still like to be able to do some of that work.
Right. Okay, do you do all the excavation work? You run the excavators?
Yes.
And, and the backhoe and, I mean, you have, you have a dump truck and the bobcat and the excavator. Those are three, you as the duty of septic?
Yes, I'm the, yeah, I'm the operator. I'm the owner and the operator. I'm a small guy.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay. Then you have a helper?
Yeah.
That works there and in the farm?
Occasionally, yes.
Okay, that's what you want?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm a small guy trying to make a living and clean up my house, and I'm just trying to figure out what, what I did wrong, where this started, and could I, could I know where this started?
Could you know where it started?
Yes.
It came to me from the selectman's office. It's all I can tell you.
Well, that's, that's secondary to me. That means important to him. It's, I mean, secondary...
You filed an application with us, so...
Absolutely, yeah, he's right, yeah.
I just, I was just curious what, what, what could have been the offense to start it, I guess.
You didn't have to file an application if you didn't want to. I mean, you applied to us, so...
So I think he was concerned because oftentimes there's a lot of sentiment about, and I don't think, I think he knows that that hasn't taken place out there, that the people in his neighborhood like him. So, you know, the only person from the neighborhood that came was in support, so I think that's, you know, and I know, if you've got a nuisance and a problem, you're going to hear about it, so...
Okay, well, I, I'm sorry.
I just want to set the record straight. Sean, I've never had a complaint about you in all the years that, that I've been here. Now, I wasn't here, I, I left when you moved here. But since I came back, I've never had a complaint until I got something from the selectman. And I did my job, I sent you the letter, and you called me. Thank you. And I never told you that you couldn't run your business. That's why I said if you appealed it within 30 days, I never shut you down, did I?
No, and that's why we're here.
Okay.
And that's all I'm saying.
And that's why we're here, and the reason why we're here is so that we can get out in the open what you do do there, and if they see fit to put conditions on it, I'm not trying to shut anybody down.
That's fair enough. Thank, thank you. You're welcome.
Aside from septic, what other construction or landscaping business does the applicant do?
None that I'm aware of. That's the only thing I think that, I mean, he clearly does landscaping on his, on his property for a non...
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the...
Oh, there was an allegation of...
Consent, no, no, well, the consent order with DEP.
There was, I was, I'm not involved in that. There's an allegation of Phil of Wetland in connection with his, with the work that he's done on the property, so that, yeah, so he's worked, he's worked that out with, the administrative consent order is in agreement with the, with the department.
I'm looking at paragraph B.
Construction, excavation, landscaping, septic, installation. I, um, I'm not familiar with that, but I'm, I'm, we can ask him.
You can ask him now, you can, you need, no, it'll take time.
No, we don't like to ask a question if we don't know the answer, so it's...
Well, yeah, generally not the best idea, but, no, no, if, I, I'm not saying you got to answer now or never, okay? It, it's, is there a business of landscaping other than septic?
To my knowledge, no, there is not.
There's not?
Okay.
And I, I, there, no lawyer looked at that document that was negotiated by a Wetland scientist and not by a lawyer. I can tell you that because...
But he did sign it.
He did, he did, he did sign it, but I, but I think that...
And I know, we, we all sign things, we all sign things, don't read it.
And we look at things, and, and words, right, he looks at the bottom line, which is, "I have to clean up the area." He doesn't look at the A through Z. He looks at what the bottom line is, and that's, that's a lesson that, that he's learned.
Call your, call your lawyer more often.
Well, I didn't know him at the time. I met him afterwards, so...
Always to look at.
No one likes to call a lawyer if you know that, they grab it.
It's too much money. Costs too much.
The president certainly accepted, right?
Just didn't.
Well, I know it's very difficult to run a one-man business.
Yeah, you do it.
I do it. It's very difficult.
Well, would it be appropriate for us to continue this and for us to come back and propose some conditions for you? Because I, I didn't bring any with me this evening. Would that be the, the, the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I'd do that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think both.
Wouldn't it be that idea if you ask us to say, "Look, here, here's what we, here's what we think", and, you know, that way you can address...
That's, that's, thank you.
You can address it by your definition.
So in terms of, you know, we've, we've talked about access from employees, and we've talked about the vehicles. Are there other items that the board has concern about in terms of conditions for what's taking place out there?
Uh, one of the, one of the things might, might be number of employees, limit the number of employees.
I think we might also, uh, limit the growth potential of the company. So, you know, amount of hard vehicles, trailers, excavators, et cetera, any other kind of substances that might be stored on the property that might be relevant to the business. In similar instances, when we've had companies that deal in services that are delivered essentially off-site, but they have to retain some level of capability to deliver those services, the dilemmas that are presented to the board is that they grow, and as you services, the dilemmas that are presented to the board is that they grow and as you grow your business, and you may not want to, and that's your call.
They don't think they want to.
But if, if it grows, all of a sudden you end up with more employees and more trucks and you're busy and it's going on and, and, you know, it becomes more of an issue. And then Ken gets calls from more people who say, wait a minute, what's that guy doing? This guy's doing the same thing over here. He shouldn't be allowed to do that. Is he allowed to do that kind of thing? So those are the kinds of constraints we typically, hours of operation, you know, do you do it seven days a week? Do you do it 18 hours a day? Do you want to do it 12 hours a day? You know, when, when's a suitable timeframe? We recognize that the business may be seasonal, that it may tie a lot to home sales because that's frequently when, when septic issues appear, when a home is, is sold and as that market ebbs and flows, which I assume in the winter is much lower than in the season we're just finishing, those kinds of things we would, we would want to look at. You need, you need to make us feel that it's a home occupation. You need to make us feel that, you know, you're one guy, maybe with one other guy, you know, maybe another at some point, if likely no more, who once in a while takes advantage of opportunities that he runs across to do this kind of business. Faced with these kinds of exceptions, when, when you sign off on, yep, I have this business here and you're advertised all over the internet and, and evidently not making an effort to take that advertising away, it, it strikes in the face of you're not running that business there very much. It's, it's a side business that I do when I come. You know, if, if it was craft fairs that you did once or twice a year, I'd go, yeah, okay, fine, everyone's entitled to make an extra buck if you can. I, I, it's hard for me to tell with the investment you have in equipment, some of which is used in both, with the investment in advertising or not that's still working for you or not, that it's not that much of a business. In order for the board to allow you to continue it in some way, shape or form, we would want to put conditions that are, sure, realistic for you because Ken's right, we don't want to close anybody down.
Have signage?
No, I, I mean, I'm 2,000 feet in the woods. I don't have a sign.
Nothing, nothing on.
I don't put signs on the side of the road. I don't have phone numbers on my vehicles.
So, so a condition that said there are, how much will be known?
Sean, you don't lock that gate, do you?
No.
You lock, okay.
What gate?
The, the gate where you're going.
Okay. Continue then.
Well, that was very helpful because I would've, I, I would've missed a couple of those, so that, that's, that's helpful. So I would propose and, and just come back and share that with you, which I, should I provide it to you a week in advance or something or, or just talk about that night? What would you, what's your preference?
If you can provide it in advance, a week in advance would be great. So we have it going into the meeting. That would give us an opportunity to see how to err it forward here. And then hopefully come to some sort of decision again. Then typically the process, which you may be familiar with if you've gone in front of other boards or boards of this nature, would be the decision, whatever that decision would be, would be determined and then the board would direct the clerk to draft a decision that would be signed at the next meeting. So probably, and then that decision is filed with the town clerk's office and then there's an opportunity, a standard 20-day appeal period afterward. And then those, and then we require you to file that decision as part of, in the register. So we're, we would probably best is looking at a, where are we now, October?
Yeah, November 27th. And, I see what you're saying.
And the decision, assigned decision in December with a 20-day appeal period, that's probably, that would be the normal course of events.
Great, well, I'm assenting to and signing a continuance here, so to November 20.
Yep, that's fine.
Can I sign on behalf of the applicant right down here?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I don't think I, we don't have any time periods for, for issuing decisions, I think we're okay here.
Right.
Okay?
Okay. Well, we have to make a motion. I make a motion, we continue the hearing per the applicant's request by his attorney to November 20 of our next meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you very much. See you tomorrow. You bet.
Hey, Tom.
I forget this trip. Let me see, let me see again.
That was our first zoning bylaw. And that's what we printed on and published on a small piece.
Probably 1960.
1961.
I think John wishes we had those today.
Yeah.
John, unless it's, unless it's here, it's prohibited.
Yeah. I don't think they were thinking that way. I think they were just thinking.
Okay, let's do this quick.
Yeah.
That was the first one.
I'm not on this case, so I don't know how you handle this.
That was the reason, I made a copy of it.
I, I think.
We, we, we can't do anything anyway.
Can't do anything tonight. I know.
Because we, we got the, one guy that's out sick.
Right.
So you, you requesting to continue it?
Well, I brought it just in case.
Okay.
What a good guess.
Who's the, who's the what? I didn't sign it, but I'll sign it now.
Yeah. Yeah. No. Hey, John, this was our first zoning bylaw. That's all the us.
One page?
One page.
Wow.
That's what was voted by town meeting establishing the zoning bylaw.
What year was that, Matt?
1961.
Wow.
I think it says a handwritten at the top.
Oh, yeah, 1960.
60, all right. And I was on the first, I was on the first appeals board.
He's a child of member, he's a child of member of this board.
And I'll be finishing this year, I will be finishing my 50, 50 year come next spring and that's when you guys are going to say bye-bye.
Yeah, we all have Nate to kick around.
Between the two of us, we've got 110 years of service on this board.
Wow, unbelievable. That's how the rest of us just listen.
And we're appointed, which means that if you had crossed the wrong select man.
Right, right, you'd be out, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
Well, on the other hand, maybe it's penance. Maybe you annoyed so many people, they keep putting it back on the board.
I used to write the decisions.
All right, okay, wait, let's skip.
Go ahead, we need to finish this.
We need to finish this up. We've got a letter from John, timely continuing publicating the Naringway project on November 20, 2014. It's very truly yours, John D. Nicholas, and you can go a little bit to us. So do I have a motion to accept this?
So move.
Second. Motion made second, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, John.
Okay, thank you.
Next one.
Next one.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. Hold favor?
Aye.